I'm here.
Everybody get a lot of trick or treaters last night?
I did.
You did? Really? Good. Well, last year you didn't get any hardly, did you?
It was, last year wasn't as good as this year, but the year before that was the best. And I wore my witch's hat. But I'm a warlock though, you know? It's a wide been, wide been black hat with a tall. Lois wore it to a Halloween party many, many years ago. And she, she made her outfit, it was like, you know, like fire had put holes in it, you know? It was, it was pretty groovy. The little children, I mean, they just go. We had a good crowd. Thought that the trunk or treat would cut it down, but it didn't.
I wondered about that because that was a big turnout to trunk or treat.
I think it's a great thing.
It is, it is.
Yeah.
Okay. We pray in the place we, Father, we thank you again now for the solid, we thank for this opportunity. Lord, become prayer right now for county, our country, and become prayer right now, Father, for those that lost loved ones in the wonder church. We thank for what you've done thus far, and we thank for what you're gonna do in the future. As we progress this time, as we go through this meeting, to try to do what's best for us is. We thank you and we love you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. As you know, a few housekeeping we need to talk about. Conference line has been set up, the number is 1-9-1-7-9-0-0-1-0-2-2. Access code is 32347. This is not a toll-free number, you may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance plan. The chairperson opened the meeting for public comments. Please follow the instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial star five, the moderator will unmute your line when it's your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comments. A commenter may speak only once or one time for each agenda item. With that being said, we go for approval of agenda.
Would you approve the revised agenda?
Yes. Most in favor saying aye? Then we'll go to approve. Consent items. Now, let me have a chance to look at the consent items.
May I?
Yes, sir.
One to on number seven, the lease agreement with Forest Castle Hall.
Yes, sir.
It's got 2022 on the first page, but on the signature page for the No Republic's got 2021. Need it for us.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
That's all I had on that.
What, I still have to look. One of the jockeys, okay, thank you. You got that, Mr. LaWanda? With that being said, did we vote on that?
I said.
If most in favor, all in favor saying aye? Okay. We go around to bid to the public here, number 11. Board to receive statement of qualifications. Set this date at 6:00 PM, as soon as that is possible for airport, Virginia Professional Engineering and Consulting Services at the Taylor County Airport.
There were four that was received. So the first one was from Jay Brown Professional Group. And this one is from GAI Consultants. And this one is from McFarland Johnson.
Mr. Chairperson, while she's opening that, the bid committee will be Melody Cox, Jamie Evan, myself, and Ward Kettering. We will bring, we will, the committee will rank these statements of qualifications and bring a recommendation back to the board.
Okay, go ahead. The fourth one's from Matt Horn.
Okay.
And Melody's on the line, she has something to say.
Melody?
Hi. Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. As you will recall, we submitted a CBGD mitigation grant where only sort of counties were eligible due to towns that were declared during the hurricanes, Hurricane, Hurricane, Hurricane. We were approached by emergency management, this mega grant application for the installation of a new generator at this jail, there were considerable issues with the generator and issues with it not working.
Melody?
Is Melissa ready?
She's on, she's on.
Melissa?
We, we aren't quite to that item, we might give us just a minute, okay? I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay. Now, you gonna bring us the information back on these?
Yes, sir. Yes.
You don't need to do nothing else?
Yeah, until the next meeting.
Okay. All right, then we go to number 12.
I do want to let you know that we did reach out to any minority businesses, disadvantaged businesses, veteranized businesses, and women businesses. We went to extra miles to make sure that we reached out to those businesses so that we were fully compliant with federal regulations.
Okay. That's number 12, board to discuss. The FDEO rebuilds Florida CBGD mitigation and fixed generator at the jail, the agenda by the grant writer. You approve of?
Yes, so I'll go back on my steel again.
Go ahead.
As you know, as you know, we submitted a grant application for an existing generator at the jail on the request of emergency management in the amount of $281,300.
Okay.
We felt like that was a pretty good amount, we actually had people come in major. We received several quotes, and we submitted a grant application for $10,000 more than what had been estimated in case, but we were covering any additional costs. That was almost two years ago. DEO thinks it wasn't in the original footprint of the generator, as this is a larger generator. We had to do all the environmental studies, all the environmental assessments, send tribal letters down, get tribal approval, so it's taken almost a year and a half on that. There was a cost, we did an environmental assessment, and since that wasn't the cost that we had planned on as a county, we actually covered it through the grant schedule last year, rather than approach the board for funds through the general fund and use our professional services and some of our office supply funds on that. Now that we've been approved to move forward, we do have a grant budget shorted in the amount of $30,904. And that's currently, but hopefully there's no additional costs coming up during this process where we're finding out what the board needs. LaWanda approached, our time is in, stranger, approached the sheriff's department, and they indicated money sources, that they did not have additional funding to approve the $30,904. So we are coming to use to find out what we'd like to do to move forward, if the board wants to find it, or if the board choose not to find it, we will need to return the grant to Department of Economic Economy.
$320,000, we're about $30,000 short, is that what you say?
$30,904.
And that, of course, is due to, unfortunately, as we all know, the cost of goods and services has risen substantially since 2020. So although we're disappointed, I'm not terrifically surprised that the cost of the generator has gone up $30,000. And this generator, from what I understand, would power the entire jail. Correct, Melody?
That is correct. We will be able to remain fully operational in the event of the loss of power or some type of disaster or situation.
I'll make a motion, go ahead, approve the extra expense to its generator.
Okay.
Motion second, any motion acceptable?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are there any other options? Not that I'm aware of, because I don't believe we can request for the grant to be changed at this point. And we looked at all the funding within the grant, and there's really nowhere else to pull money from. So. Really have a choice, yeah. I don't believe so. Now, there are two options as far as where to, where to transfer the money from. There's reserve for capital, general fund, reserves for capital projects, which is healthy. We could certainly transfer from there. There is a reserve for jail capital, but that only has about $50,000 in it. And for whatever reason, I just, I would rather leave that. But it really, it doesn't matter at the end of the day. We can either pull it out of the reserve for jail capital or general fund reserves for capital. So what, what is your?
It was. And this camp recommended that we do not reduce the size of the generator, as it would not accomplish what we were trying to do. And in addition, this is the lowest amount we've been able to find, and it's actually through the Florida Sheriff's Association. It's the lowest cost we've been able to find for a generator this far.
Do you need a motion amended to show where it's coming from?
Yeah, yes, please.
You want to amend it, right?
That will, amend the motion to cover that.
From general fund, or?
General fund.
The general.
From a general fund, yeah.
And the jail fund?
Yeah.
The general.
The general.
The general fund, not the jail fund.
I'll second that.
You said that the jail fund.
Only had $50,000.
I didn't need you jail fund, what Mr. LaWanda said off the lead.
Yeah, but we don't want to take it out of the general fund, we want to take it out of capital and proof. Well, it's the general fund reserved for capital. Yes, not the operational.
That's what you said. Motion in second, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Melody. Okay. 13. Flash and beacon maintenance agreement adopted and authorized as an agenda by Hankett.
So this will generate revenue of $9,764 in the upcoming fiscal year. So we would encourage you to approve the agreement and the authorizing resolution, if you will.
Would you like to read the resolution off topic, LaWanda?
Sure. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the execution of a traffic signal and flash and beacon maintenance agreement between the State of Florida Department of Transportation and Taylor County.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, 13-8.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Do you have approval of the agreement as well?
Motion to approve the group?
Right.
Motion second, agreement, approve, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right. 13-8, a board to consider approval of resolution supporting Operation Green Light Life of Veterans and Advertisers, agenda by Marshall Dokes, County at Lindisburg. Go ahead.
So this coming Veterans Day, the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Officers and by the nation, 3,069 counties, parishes, and boroughs to join Operation Green Light, show support for our veterans by lighting the building screen from November 7th through the 13th. By shining a green light, county governments and our residents will let veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. And I really think this is a very sweet and positive gesture for our veterans and our community. So we're requesting that the board adopt the resolution supporting Operation Green Light in Taylor County, and then also the advertisement to invite the community to join in on the Operation Green Light.
Do we have a green light?
We're gonna order some, if you approve.
Okay, motion to read the resolution in its entirety?
A motion, all in, second?
Second.
Mr. Bishop, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bishop?
Resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Taylor County, Florida have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Taylor County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, the veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help color former service members access to more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during the first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Taylor County appreciates the sacrifice of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore it be resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans County. Taylor County Board of County Commissioners hereby declares from November 7th, 2022, to November 13th, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, it be further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all of us who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence.
Motion to approve?
Sure.
If I wanted to say an aye?
Aye.
Okay. What else could he do to that?
I think that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Board go to number 14. Board to consider approval of revise board calendar for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 year as agenda by county magistrate.
If you recall, during the last workshop, there was discussion of rescheduling the second meeting date in November to November 28th at 6 o'clock PM. So we have revised the calendar to reflect that. Commissioner Figel was not here, so we wanted to make sure that date works with you. And we also need to set a date for ethics training. Yes. Yes. I was thinking about that. Yes, ma'am, so that's, so.
Well, does he mean in 6 o'clock, right?
Yes, sir, November 1st and 28th at 6:00 PM, and then December 5th and 19th at 6:00 PM. November 28th will be reorganization and a state of the county presentation. And then the 5th and 19th, the 5th will be our regular meeting, and then the 19th is primarily to approve invoices, unless something comes up between, you know, later in the month.
That's 6:00 PM also?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Listen, now the ethics training is, what, six hours or four? Could we, if, if everybody wanted to, could we do it on the 28th? So that it ends just about the time this, this meeting starts at 6? Is anybody interested in that?
I'd rather do it in December, if we could. You know, sometime in, first, around first of December.
Well, then maybe December 5th? I don't have my calendar, so.
On Sunday, got a meeting that evening?
No, we haven't.
Right. We have a board meeting, I think the question was if y'all wanted to come early, say maybe around 1:00 or whenever, and get your training up, or any other time. Well, if we came at 1:30, or that would give us a 30-minute window before 6 o'clock. It doesn't matter.
What are they gonna do?
December 5th. 5th, Monday, December 5th.
That, yeah, right. Hold up to your calendar.
Oh, you're trying to take them, that's right.
Check, I lost this year, so I go away.
Say what then?
I'm getting, wherever y'all want to set.
December the 5th? It, it, that's what I want to do. I, I'll let you know if there's a conflict, so. Okay. I don't know of anything, but I don't have it in front of me.
What time are we gonna start, though?
Uh, 1:30?
Do we need to move on? Involve them?
No, I don't really, no, I can just make arrangements for that and make sure nobody has a conflict.
I'll make a motion to approve the number 14 to revise calendar for the year.
Motion second, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, vote, we go to number 15, vote to consider approval of draft economic incentive tax exemption score making as agenda by the county magistrate.
We did review this some last week, just to review the way these different tiers are ranked. Capital investment, if the investment is under $1 million, there's one point. 1 to 5 million is three points, and over 5 million is five points. Now, that could be also tangible property, but you can't double dip. So pre-purchase of tangible property is five points. And if the tangible personal property is purchased, it's, it would be worth three points. Under number of full-time permanent employees, it would not be construction workers, this would be permanent employees. 25 to 50 is one point, 50 to 100 is three points, and over 100 is five points. The wage rate, if it's 50% above the Florida minimum wage, it is zero points. Greater than 50%, which would be $17 to $21 an hour, is one point. And 100% above the Florida minimum wage rate would be three points, and that's $22 an hour. Under phase of operation, if it's a pre-land acquisition, it's five points. Land acquired, three points, and construction in progress or complete would be one point. And then if you look at the matrix, the scoring matrix guide would be scored on 0 to 5, yields a suggested abatement of 30% for three years, 6 to 10 is 50% for five years, 11 to 15 is 75% for seven years, and 15 to 18 is a suggested abatement of 100% for 10 years. If you're all in agreement and approve this scoring matrix, this would then go to the TCDAs as the format that they would use when they are recommending, when they make a recommendation to the board, which is what is in our ordinance. If we're, if we're gonna do something, then it, it needs to have structure to it so that there's no guesswork and no, you know, it's right by the book, so to speak. And it sounds like this is something that I feel like we should, we should consider. Well, and another potential use for this is when I bring my annual report to the board. I can, I can make, you know, score them out again and compare what they expected to bring to Taylor County to what they actually delivered.
We need it in the, in the wording too, you know, at the end of the year, if they're not following those footprints to cancel it on them too.
I believe that is within the ordinance.
Within the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you have the ultimate discretion to?
How, how do that get checked, who checks that at the end of the year, I mean?
I will bring you a, a report for every, for every business who is receiving the exemption.
Okay.
So there is a form that they complete, and then we bring that to the board to make the annual report.
Okay. Just like superbook, for instance?
Yes.
They get, they get checked on how many employees and what they're paying them each year?
Yes, sir, and if you recall, in January is normally when I make those reports to the board.
Thank you.
So this, this, so to be sure that I understand, okay? So when, when they meet this criteria, they're saying, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we expect to do. So we're gonna go ahead and give them that for the first year without knowing, we're just gonna trust them to get that. So at the end of the year, if they didn't meet that, then. Then. We can cancel, but they've already got a year's worth of tax abatement. Yes, because I don't make a report to the board until they've actually received the abatement. So in other words, if, if an exemption is granted based upon pre-construction, So, in other words, if, if an exemption is granted based upon pre-construction, so that ordinance can be adopted for whatever period of time before they actually receive the exemption. If there's nothing to exempt, I don't bring a report to the board. So, when they actually have that abatement of taxes, that's the, the year after that is when I make the report to the board. In January.
So, if they get through in July, so it's only seven months or four months they got left, or five months they got left, rather than?
It's a full year, because for as far as, the way I understand it, as far as what is recorded to the property appraiser that starts in January. So, it would be a full year of abatement. And so, they would make a report at the end of the calendar year. So, sometime.
After full year to operate. Okay, any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve?
Sir.
Motion second, all in favor saying aye?
Aye.
County administrator to discuss, if they make some light.
So, just to follow up on tournaments, we have three tentative dates for one-day tournaments, softball tournaments, beginning in February. I updated the chamber last week, and some of the members of the chamber will assist us in notifying businesses prior to the actual schedule of the tournament to ensure that businesses are ready. And they have committed to trying to offer some coupons or, or something like that to folks coming to Taylor County. I have not received applications yet, but there's plenty of time. But the chamber has agreed to assist us with that process.
Is, is this something that the chamber could get involved with and maybe contacting some people to bring tournaments here? Could that be a possibility? And it doesn't have to be, baseball, I mean, there's all kind of, of tournaments.
Possibly, I can go talk to them.
What do y'all, what do y'all think?
You, you will try and see if like.
Okay. I know as far as softball side, I think everyone's in contact with softball and the baseball side, and it's just, really, they just need to get, the chamber would just need to work with our, just say soccer. If you stop if you're referring to soccer, and that's the only other one I would, who, whoever operate in the soccer association. They, because there's some guys there, they, their place travel ball. And I asked them, they just need to get with those guys and ask, you know, who kind of handles that? Same as what we do with softball.
And we can work on that internally. We're, I have to just start with softball tournament right now to make sure we have everything ready. And, you know, we're gearing back up for the possibility of tournaments.
That's all?
That's all. Thank you.
I'm going to take a shine from the top of the banana, the end of ice. Anyone? On the other. Got anyone on that? Do you have paper you got, son?
No, sir.
Tough to be here?
Well, we got something coming from the sheriff, but tell us something good, sheriff.
Not today.
Okay, we'll go to the board informational items.
I talked to a couple of people that went to the mud bogging, and they said it was best that you ever had both of them, mud bogging both of them. And the people that put it on really did good, and they thought they, in Taylor County businesses, I talked to a couple of them, they're glad for mud bogging being in Taylor County. It really helped, it really helped for the county. I thought I wanted.
There's no R. It's called a court.
Motion to adjourn.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.